Ready or not?
I love you.
There, just be there.
Recording in progress.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for turning up for the special meeting to be held today at 5:35. 5:35 PM. Madam Cook, can you please take roll call?
Yes. Hassan Ahmad?
President.
Moby Dune?
Here.
Nancy Breyer?
Here.
Robert Coniston?
Absent.
Denise Malnoff-Maxwell?
Here.
Hassan Saab?
Present.
Someone, so is absent. Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank. Okay, Madam Cook, we have a roll call. Thank you. Next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. We're going to have our very own Chief of Staff Mariana lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance of the flag, the United States of America, and it's through the Republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mariana. You may be seated. Next up, we have the special meeting agenda approval, please.
Councilor Chair?
Yes, sir.
I am sure that the Duba Heights City Council approved the agenda for the special meeting of June 11, 2025 as submitted.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Give me your chief opinion. Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next up, we have approval of minutes. None public and public hearing and public comments on anything you'd like to talk about. Anybody on Zoom? Anybody in the audience? Okay, next up we have comments from council members.
I just have one thing.
Yes.
See if I can find it. It was brought to my attention a couple weeks ago by a resident that there are being these really bad staples put in the ground, like so. And I don't know if it's DTE or it's when they're doing the meters.
No, what they do is when they put the hay.
Yeah, on top of this.
Holds it down from.
Well, apparently people have to be careful pulling these out because they can.
Yeah.
Or if you don't pull them out, do they sink in the ground?
Yeah, they will sink on their own?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, anyhow, I wanted people to be aware that that could be a issue.
Yeah, that could. Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other announcements or comments? I want to go back to public comments. Seeing none, I will give a quick announcement later on. Next up, move to closed session. Can I get a motion here?
Councilor Chair?
Councilman?
I move that the Duba Heights City Council moved to a closed session at 5:38 PM so that the city council may discuss the legal case of the word this.
What is it?
Word this versus Duba Heights, which may include the city council, Mayor Bezzie, Chief of Staff Hernandez, Preparation Counsel, Pariito Young, of Rosari, Schultz, Dupick and. Bravo da. His name is PC.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Honorable Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Just for those that are on Zoom, although there's nobody in the audience, but anyone on Zoom that's watching, we are going into a closed session. We should be out around six o'clock. Thank you so much.
Councilor Chair, before you go, I do need to do a roll call.
Okay.
That's okay. Um, Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Moby Dune?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Denise Talanowski-Maxwell?
Yes.
Hassan Saab?
I can't. My blood pressure's.
Hassan Saab?
Yes.
And I was.
Motion carries. You got to do one once in a while. I did it the last time.
No, I did it last time.
You should.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council return to an open session at six sixteen PM. Second word.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad to bring us back into an open session, seconded by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Yays have it, that's bringing us into an open session. Now we're gonna be making a motion by following the direction of our Corporation Council from our closed session. Can I get a motion?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council to go with the recommendation of the legal counsel.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad to follow the recommendation of our legal counsel.
Second.
Motion made seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion on that? Madam Cook, do we need a roll call on this? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Yays have it, motion carries. Next up, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Saab.
Take a motion to adjourn the Dearborn Heights City Council's special meeting.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Yays have it, motion starting our next meeting. Is everybody okay to just jump into the next meeting so you can get the break early on?
Yes.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for joining us today for the June eleventh twenty twenty five regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. Then, wha- I'm sorry. The regular meeting to begin for Dearborn Heights is called to order today at six seventeen PM.
You know, I know.
Madam Cook, please take roll call.
Asana Ma'am.
Present. Hang on one second.
You know what, if we stop this, you know, we got to see him. Oh, okay. No? It's just, I don't need that. Hmm, okay. Just, I'm leaving. It's okay.
Yes, it's right here.
We answered.
Hello, there you go. Sorry, leave it to me to fix the technology.
Thanks.
No, didn't work still.
Mobey Dan?
Hello, hello.
Sleep.
No, you're good, fixed.
Well.
Hello. Use your computer.
I need the sign in thing, it's not with the, turn everything off. That's a question.
You guys ready? Madam Cook, can you please take roll call?
Yeah, Asana Ma'am, mobey Dan?
Here.
Nancy Breyer?
Here.
Robert Coniston?
Here.
Denise Malineski Maxwell?
Here.
Asana Saab?
Present.
Um, Wenzel's absent, Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Before I start today's meeting, I just wanna have a couple of discussions. I got a phone call from Councilman Wenzel, he has asked me to inform the residents, those at home here in attendance with us, that he is facing, he was actually struck in the back of the head while he was working at Divine Child. He was doing a crosswalk volunteering, he was struck with a ball, he has a concussion. He is doing better, but his doctors asked him to rest and stay home. So he will not be here at today's city council meeting. But he wanted everybody to know that he's doing fine, he's okay, and he'll be hopefully in attendance with us at our next city council meeting. Second thing here is I wanna give a moment of silence for Director LaFevre. He's our, he's our ordinance director, he recently lost a family member, his brother passed away. I know him and his family are taking it tough, so I'd like to do a quick moment of silence for Director LaFevre. I'd also like to do another moment of silence, Angela Venegas is the president here with us today. She recently lost her fourteen year old pup, it's been a part of their family for fourteen years. Angela, my condolences to you and your family, and I'd also like to have a moment of silence. Thank you so much. Next up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance, Pledge of Allegiance to be led by our firefighters who are here present with us today.
Pledge of Allegiance, I am hereby the United States of America and to the Republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you guys, baby city. Can you update any agenda? She's gonna let them know. Thank you, Shu. Next up, we have a city council resident recognition.
Good evening. Um. Riyad, bro, come on up. Tonight we're recognizing a special individual in our community. Good evening, everyone. You know, if I seem a bit nervous, I promise you it's not because of the crowd, it's actually my wife isn't, uh, today, so I'm gonna be on my best behavior. Tonight we're gonna recognize Riyad Murad, he's currently our Act seventy eight president. And we want to recognize him for his service to our community. Riyad is a product and son of Dearborn Heights, born and raised in the city and a product of the Crestwood District. He's now residing here with his wonderful wife. He's now residing here with his wonderful wife. Riyad has never distanced himself from the people and the place they shaped him, and said he has chosen to invest his time, talent, and energy back in this community tonight, and we honor him for that service. His role as president of Act Seventy Eight Civil Service Commission, Riyad has demonstrated unwavering leadership, uh, leadership. When the very principles of fairness and transparency of our police and fire promotional process were being challenged, Riyad did not hesitate, he stood his grounds, he defended the act, and in doing so, defended the integrity of our public safety institutions. His efforts has ensured that the men and women who served the city are protected by the due process they serve, and for that, we are grateful. But Riyad's commitment to justice extends beyond, far beyond the city government. Through his legal practice, he has built a reputation, not only as an outstanding attorney or an advocate for the most often overlooked. His firm has been placed, a place of refuse for individuals with no money, no power, and often no one to speak for them. Riyad has stepped in for so many people, not out of obligation, but for principle that often at no cost. One moment in particular speaks volume, when peaceful protesters in Ann Arbor were unlawfully arrested in Ann Arbor, Riyad didn't just watch from the sideline, he offered legal representation, free of charge, defending their constitutional rights, reminding us all that the law must be protected to everyone, not just privileged or well-connected. That's not just legal work, it's public service. And Riyad, your career reflects, more than just legal expertise, it reflects the moral courage. You have stood firm when it most mattered, you've used your position not to elevate yourself, but to often lift up others, and for that, you've remained grounded to the city that raised you. And now, I've been told you have other skill sets, but we're gonna keep that for another occasion. But tonight, we thank you for your leadership, your integrity,
I hear it, Councilman.
And reminding us that the strength of the city lies not in just policies, but in the character of those defending it. And it was with great pride, we present to you tonight the Dearborn Heights Street Service Award. What if they had it open? I want to thank you for your unwavering support to the city of, the city of Dearborn Heights and the community.
Councilman, I think his wife is here, maybe we should have his wife up too.
I got a few comments I'd like to save, but I'd rather save them for another day. With a picture at least.
Yeah.
Council Chair. Thank you, thank you, Councilman Saab, let's give him a little applause. What you don't know is actually Councilman Saab really admires Attorney Murad here and President of Act Seventy Eight. He made him his own plaque on his own expense, so let's also recognize Councilman Saab for that. That was very kind and, and. Gotta tell you, Murad is actually younger than me, but I've always looked up to Attorney Murad. He's somebody that, as he stands behind me, has always had my back, has been a huge supporter to the city of Dearborn Heights, and kinda like a lot of our residents that are here in person, Angela Venegas, Vince Zeprowski, Margaret King, even at home, Rachel Lapointe. Row Murad has not missed a city council meeting, online, on Zoom, in the last five years. This man is committed to Dearborn Heights, he serves the city in two ways, as a resident and as the president of our Public Act, our Act Seventy Eight Commission, making sure and ensuring that we're hiring some of the best individuals amongst our police department and our fire department. And Row, not just as our president of Act Seventy Eight, but as a brother, I love you, I admire you, I appreciate you, and thank you for everything that you do. Most importantly, we also love his mother-in-law, his dad, his wife, his mother, everybody in the audience.
Here.
So, let's recognize them as well. We can pull over here in the back.
That works.
Are you ready? Are you ready, Scotty? Thank you so much.
Bring his voice out, too.
Riyad, come on up.
Come on, come on.
He's also a teacher, he's also a professor. Wearing different pants than my suit jacket.
Yeah. Make sure.
Now, I'm sorry, we're talking about retirement.
One more, one more.
There we go, okay, thank you.
Glenn, get up, I gotta picture with him too.
Now I have a Facebook name, I've been lost, you know?
I think I'm zero.
No, I'm six.
Row, if you wanna give a few words more than welcome, please. Angie, you didn't know about Row Murad watching city council meetings? AC, you wanna go up?
Nice.
AC. Maybe, maybe a picture with the parents, Mr. Murad. Guys, please stop, stop taking pictures, stop taking a picture. Get up.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate this more than I could say. I'm totally caught off guard, they told me I was gonna be here for a different reason, so I had no idea. Thank you, guys, for psyching me out and finding a way to bring my dad and wife and family here. You know, I love Dearborn Heights, I've always loved Dearborn Heights, I talk about it all the time. I think we have the best city in the world, and I love that I get to serve the city, I love that I get to practice law in the city. I love that I get to network and communicate with all of you, and thank you, guys, for all you do and your hard work, and I really appreciate the recognition, thank you.
Appreciate you. I want you to meet Angela Venegas, please.
Have you watched me, guys?
Uh-oh. They've been calling, they got a.
There they go. Next up, we have the agenda approval.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I moved that Dearborn Heights City Council approved the agenda for the regular meeting of June eleventh, two thousand twenty five, as submitted.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? I have a quick discussion. Man, did I bring my pen, I did. And respectfully so, Councilman Wenzel sent me a message asking us that we tabled the fire station and to not be voted on tonight. But ultimately, that goes on the majority of this council, but I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up the information which he requested me to specifically and all of us to do here. If there's anybody here that wants to make that motion to table it, you're more than welcome to today, and if not, we can make this vote in keeping it on. Guys, please hang on, nothing from the audience. Seeing none, motion moves forward, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
There's no motions. The motions for the agenda.
For the agenda, okay. Yeah. Okay. All right, let's redo this. Motion to approve the agenda, please state aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have minutes of the special meeting of May twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I moved the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the minutes for the special meeting of May twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five, as outlined in four, eight.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. My phone?
Was right.
Sorry. Next up, is minutes of the regular meeting of May twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five.
Councilor Chair.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the minutes for the regular meeting of May twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five, as outlined in four dash B.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have public hearings and public comments.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I'd like to put a comment out there before residents get up regarding the fire station. I asked the fire station to be put back out today for a few reasons. I actually went out of my way for the past couple of weeks since the last meeting, speaking to our engineer, speaking to the experts, I've been on the field, and did my research, and based on what I got back, a lot of people are spreading misinformation regarding where the fire station is going. And I'll always say this today, and I'll say this anytime, you know, and I'll be responsible for my consequences on this. The problem is, you can't put a motion and play with public safety because of emotions. You can't risk people's safety because of emotions, and I won't allow that to happen. I know it's been a three-three tie across. I think it's time to move forward. Hopefully, tonight, the new fire station will be approved to be built on Beach Daily. I believe that a lot of misinformation about the flooding, about where the house is set, the elevations and everything, this is my field of expertise, is false. Where it's actually, where the fire station is actually going, it's not, it's never flooded.
Councilman, can we have this discussion after?
Yes, but I just wanna put this on public media, public comment, I told somebody I would, and I'm doing that, please. And I know a lot of people are gonna get up here and talk, but I did my research on my own time, and I believe that my vote that I'm taking today is an educated vote, not based on emotion, but based on expert facts. Thank you.
Thank you, I respect you wholeheartedly, and I don't think there's ever been a time where Councilman Saab has made a vote based on emotion. I think he does a thorough look-through on it, and I respect him on it, but we're gonna take it out to public comments. How you doing, young lady? Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
My name is Barbara Philposkin, I live in the South End, and I'm eighty-four years old, and I have.
Is that, is that.
I went to Catholic school, I couldn't find a job that.
Ma'am, can you please state?
The street.
The street that you live on?
Oh, Gertrude.
Gertrude.
And so, anyway, I couldn't find a decent job at Seventeenth, I went to Wilson Institute of Accounting, and then I finally got a job in R O. Pope in the accounting department, worked there a few years, and then got married and had a baby. My baby's right here.
Baby.
He's in his sixties and he's retired. So, anyway, what's we call it, I wanted to live into South Dearborn, and my, one of my friends, her husband was a broker, and he says I couldn't afford that, and so, anyway, he says, new subdivision, South Dearborn Heights. And I says, okay, I'll go see it. So, I came to see him, I couldn't, the roads weren't even paved, it was ditches. And, I mean, that's a long time ago, I couldn't believe that there was, I thought it was on a farm. But, anyway, I did look at the house, it was sixteen-three, which was a lot of money at that time. But, anyway, I went back in the car and I says, okay, I like it, I don't like the ditches, I says, but I tell you, if you can knock that down from sixteen-four down to sixteen, I'll take it. And they accepted it, so I've been here ever since. And now, the problem is that I love the new fireworks law. You have to use fireworks on your own property, I do love that. The only thing is, that doesn't work for everything that's going on, because, what's we call it? And back in my house, there's this huge tree, and I'm gonna pass these out, you can pass it out to them, and you can go back to the last page, and you will see the tree, I'm talking, my property was damaged from these aerial fireworks because they were commercial. When they shot them up, it took four properties.
Ma'am.
And there was stuff all over the place.
So, you actually get two minutes, I'm gonna give you an additional minute to finish up, and I don't want you to think that I'm taking away time from you, but, so, I just, I want, I want you to know, I'm gonna give you an additional minute on this one, okay?
Do it.
You've got sixty seconds in this.
Oh. Well, you have all of it, so let's just turn to the last page right now. You can see there's, you can read all the rest later on, but that's a monster tree, what's in that tree? The electric pole, the telephone pole, everything. They were shooting into that tree, which is right in the alley part of my house, and I had stuff all the way, the whole property, from front to back. And then, the next page in front of that is my driveway. I had all this stuff into the driveway, you can't get it out, you sandblasted driveway. So, anyway, that's all I gotta say, and there's some suggestions in here what to do about it, that's all I wanna do is talk about the fireworks.
Thank you. Barbara, I got a great solution for us today. Today, we have our fire marshal and our fire chief that are with us, and they are gonna help you in the situation, if you don't mind, get your contact information over to them, and you'll get a phone call from them tomorrow morning.
Max is usually.
But I got samples of what was in my yard.
They're right over here.
I had sticks, I had rubber pieces from these things, from the front of my, back of my house, always to the front.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, guys. Anyone else in the audience?
Let's go over here, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Michael McCaffrey, Roosevelt Street, Dearborn. Hello, Mayor and Council, I'm here in support today of reconsideration of Claim Thirty Eight. It's a college reimbursement for one of my staff, Saba Al Hashami. Saba is a manager of the Carolyn Candy Library and has been a shining example of what I feel the tuition reimbursement program was intended for. Saba took a class towards a degree in library science at my encouragement, as such classes are necessary for library certification for state aid.
Sorry, Director, you said item thirty?
Eight. Thirty-eight. Saba meets all the requirements for the tuition program, she has been with us for over ten years. She is taking a class directly relevant to her profession, has no plans to depart. We've had two previous staff members go through this program, and one remained with us until she retired, and the other is still employed with us. The program has led to the development and enrichment of the community by allowing us to add E S L and foreign language materials, and implement a number of new programs at both our libraries. Including the class payment that's on this agenda, Saba is only the class she is currently taking, and the program will be complete, and we'll have another valuable staff member trained internally. I don't plan on utilizing this program for anyone in the immediate future, although, should I need to, I plan to bring this to the council's attention prior to classwork. Saba has previous coursework okayed by the council as well, so I know indication this was initially out of bounds. So, I humbly request council pass this reimbursement, and thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you so much, Director McCaffrey. Anyone else in the audience?
Ben Strupkowski, I wanna talk to you about, I don't know, eight. I've been a resident here for a long, long time, and the only reason I'm a resident here is because my parents moved us here back in the seventies, because the Dearborn Heights Fire Department had paramedics. Obviously, some of you may know I was born with a defect in the heart, and my parents decided to come to Dearborn Heights because of the paramedic teams that they had here, and a good friend of my mother's convinced her that that would be the best place for the family to be. With that being said, I can't sit back and think about these guys living in a building that's about to cave in or fall in on them. They need a new station, it's obsolete, it's outdated, and I think, you know, a lot of us may not like it, but you know what, there's a lot of things in life that we don't like. I suggest that we pick the golf course, build the new station there, and while we're doing that, I'm sure we can get some sort of funding through grants or whatever, with what Novi just did, or Plymouth Township just did over on Hagerty and Seven Mile there. A lot of that is a brand-new fire station along with a recreation center. Why don't we just turn the golf course and that fire station into a new fire recreation center, and leave the rest of the golf course properly strictly for recreation, since we're not gonna have a thirty-six-hole golf course according to chat on social media. I hate to see that, but it looks like it was, it's gonna be. So, and I do wanna say this, you know, the people are saying that that pond never flooded. Like I said, I've been here since I was a little boy, and I have seen the water up to that pond level. So, if you put the station at the highest level at Ann Arbor Trail in Hines there, or Beach Daily, that's your best spot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, good luck, and let's get this ball rolling.
Thank you so much.
Dragging our butts.
How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Angela Venegas, Dwight Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. I'm here too, it's about nine A, I wanna piggyback on what Vince said. I wasn't all in favor of it at first, but no one else can find a better place to put it. At this point, they need a new fire station, they can't keep living in these conditions. Hassan Saab has done his research, I've talked with him thoroughly about it, he's changed my mind, and at this point, public safety is at risk. I have, my mom is with me, she's eighty-one years old. I have, my mom is with me. She's eighty-one years old. If we have to rely on another city because our fire station is closed, one life isn't worth it. So, a lot of us, a lot of people don't like it, but I think if Saab presents everything that he knows and gives people some knowledge, I think people would agree. At this point, no one else can come up with another place for it. So, you know, this is public safety we're talking about here, so. We all, you know, we all have accidents, fire at people's houses. We can't have a response time that far away. And if they close, we're relying on other cities. And if other cities have priority calls, we're last. So you guys really need to start thinking about this. Time's ticking away.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in. The city you reside in, you have two minutes.
Okay, my name is Leila Elzane. I'm from Dearborn Heights. I live in the Golf U Manor subdivision and I'm off of Rouge River Drive. Um, so I am the president of the Golf U Manor Civic Association. Um, we have the longest-running civic association in the state of Michigan since nineteen fifty-seven. And I've been the president of it for around eight years now. Um, so I'm here also to talk about nine A, the fire station as well. Um, parts of Golf U Manor, we have five hundred and, five hundred and four homes in our neighborhood. Parts of them do back up to the golf course and they also back up to Heinz Drive as well and the Field of Dreams. So we kind of back up to a bunch of different areas. Um, recently, I did take a tour. I haven't spoke to Mr. Councilman Saab at all about his research, but I have like read things about it and heard things about his research. Um, but I took it upon myself to do my own research. I went on a tour last week of the golf course of both sites where they wanna build. I got knowledge from Jason who runs the golf course and also the fire chief as well. It was the three of us. We drove around both sites. And I'm here to represent Golf U Manor and say that I think the site two A on Beach Daily would be the best for the fire station. Obviously, it needs to be built because of the living conditions that the firefighters have right now. Um, but speaking with also some of the residents in our neighborhood, it just, all in general with the school traffic, the fire station, the response time, um, the golf course itself, having it over there, like it was just stated that they're not gonna have another eighteen holes up and running. But this fire station is only gonna take up partial of that area. And from what I was told, they will still have holes that they could use, nine holes. They could do golf, they could do disc golf, it could be maintained to whatever they want. So it's not like it's taking up the whole course. Um, so I'm here just to represent Golf U Manor and the neighborhood and say that I think that the Beach Daily site would be the best location.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
You timed that perfect. I love it.
I know. I, all planned out.
And really, I wanna recognize Leila as a huge advocate in our community. She's always giving back. If it's not in Golf U Manor, it's across the city, whether in the South End, the North End, at the local schools. And so I also wanna recognize her in her role. Thank you. And and serving on the board every year, she invites the entire city, the mayor, the clerk, the treasurer, and all the city council members to their annual uh dinner. The fire chief and the police chief are also in attendance and Leila and Amanda, you also, you guys do a great job. You guys are also engaged with like Saint Lynas and so anytime I'm in the area of like talking Saint Lynas, I'll like, you guys know Amanda? And they're all like, yeah, we know Amanda. So Amanda's in the audience soon. Let's recognize her as well. How you doing, ma'am?
I know these ladies. I know all of them. They used to be my neighbors. My name is Lisa Hicks Clayton. I'm speaking as treasurer. I live on Gully. So uh, real quick, I don't have anything too exciting to share with you, but I would like to share a reminder that we are preparing the tax rolls for the summer tax bills that will be mailed out to your homes the first week in July. And it will be available online by July the first. There's lots of ways to pay, including kiosk, online, uh, Apple Pay, Google Pay, partial pay. We have a lot of different ways that are listed on the city website. What I want you to know though, and I'm going to thank IT Director Cooper for his assistance with this, is we get a lot of questions about, hey, what are our taxes going to? I'm sure you do as well. So if you go online to the City of Dearborn Heights website, to the treasurer's page, you will find these really great uh graphics that show the breakdown of how your million dollars are being spent. So if you're curious, you can take a look there. Just go right to the website treasurer's page. Pay attention to the upper corner, upper right-hand corner, what school district is listed. Because every, we have five school districts in Dearborn Heights that we tax, collect taxes for, is what we actually do. And you wanna see like one is D. Seven, Crestwood, et cetera. Make sure that's the one for where you live when you look at the chart. So it's good to see, but you can see citywide fourteen percent of your tax dollars goes to city services. Public safety is three percent. Solid waste is four percent. Sanitation too, our library services, which are phenomenal. Three percent. Uh, so it's good just to take a look and people can get an answer. If they have any questions, they can call us at the treasurer's office. Which is three one three seven nine one three four one zero. If I may so, as a reminder for tax deferments, I have mailed out letters to all the recipients who were eligible last year. You should have that in the mail.
Thank you.
With your application, please call me if you have questions. Deadline is September fifteenth. Thank you.
Thank you so much, treasurer. How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in and the street that you live on. You got two minutes.
Renee Murna, Annapolis, Dearborn Heights. Uh, well, wanna tell you, I did my homework. I went over to this, to the Spirit Fest. It was phenomenal. The ground, it was so peaceful over there, such a good feeling, the families that showed up. I, the police officers that were there, I mean, everything was camaraderie. There was, it was just awesome. It was just awesome. So I prayed the grounds the first day to just like put a seal around it. So I'm not too sure how, but the rest of it went. But when I was there and I never heard of anything bad that came from there, just everything good. So excellent job on the Spirit Fest for And it got me so inspired with these city council meetings that I signed up to get my water meter changed, even though I was a holdout. And I convinced my neighbor to do it. So next Friday, me and my neighbor are getting our water meter. So um, just wanna let you know that I do pray for the city. I pray for you guys individually. I pray for you guys as a group. And I'm gonna tell you something. There has been a spirit of paralyzation here. And I know why it's here. It's because since I started here, I started praying that things would come to the surface and things were coming to the surface. And it kinda blindsided everybody. And I know that when that happens, people get upset because everything's coming to the surface. But I'm gonna tell you, I just kept you guys in prayer and you handled it well. You came through it. I've, 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 even today, I've prayed that the spirit of paralyzation will stop, the spirit of fear will stop. You guys will move forward with whatever you decide on the fire station. I know you're gonna have wisdom to do the right thing. Whatever you decide, I'm on your side. And I think the city, from watching the interactions, have gotten an education. And I'm sure they're on your side also. So thanks, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, we'll move over to Zoom. How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in and the street that you live on. Barbara, Detroit Street.
Good afternoon, everybody. I just have a couple things. Um, I'm just gonna agree with Vince and Angela regarding the uh, fire station. That's what I was gonna talk about. Um, mine is real easy. Uh, this Sunday is Father's Day. I wish everyone a happy dad, father, a blessed day for everyone. And the third thing, if we can just have a five-second moment of silence for George Anne and Lynn in the clerk's office. We started the election process already for everything. It's extremely busy in the clerk's office. They're doing double the work. So hats off to George Anne and to Lynn and everyone else there. And uh, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else in the audience? Anyone else on Zoom? Seeing none, move on. Next up, reports from city official. Moment we've all been waiting for. Forgot it. I'm sorry. We're not there yet. Fun transfers and current claims, guys.
Councilor Sheriff.
Councilman Saab.
I'm with the Dearborn Heights City Council. Approved the current claims and ACH wire transfers six dash one through six dash thirty-eight as submitted.
Second motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Yes.
That's by Robert Constant. Um, can I uh remove? One second, I'm sorry. I got them right here. Um, I moved thirty-seven and thirty-six.
I was gonna agree with those. Uh, would you like to amend your motion? Anyone else? Any discussion?
We council sheriff, uh, we didn't remove something. Did they remove them all or keep them all? I mean.
So I had this good conversation and I I said the same thing and I had this conversation with Director McCaffrey. Um, nothing against the, any, any of the two individuals versus Saba. Saba has been with our city for ten-plus years. She's taking uh classes to uh, classes that other librarians that work for the city have taken. So it's a program that the city is being taken. If you look at um, numbers, you know, I don't wanna give any names, but number thirty-six, it's like, they're taking a biology class, which is completely different than their department. And not to say that I am, you know, in favor of somebody taking a library class that's, you know, studying to become a librarian who could be potentially the librarian in the future. I'm saying that the biology class is not in the position of, and I, and and I've actually gotten it from the other people in this department as well. But I know you understand that we have to pick and choose where we can do things. I can wholeheartedly say ten, fifteen years you've been with our city, you've taken a program that other people have taken that are still in this uh, uh, department that have taken in the past, to help better, to be able to serve the residents. I'm all for that.
No, I'm definitely, I'm definitely with you, but I mean, at the same time, uh, I think, I think a policy needs to change. And I requested that last time from the administration. And by the way, where the, where the money coming from? And since we don't have the money for this fiscal year, I know we're gonna approve it today, so where's the money coming from?
I think, believe Director McCaffrey uh said that yeah, funded from our fund, the fringe benefits for
And then do you still have money?
Okay, yeah. And and he was able to break it down, where the money's coming from. I'll get very, you councilman. He was able to break it down, why he should have, this should have came in as more, he said, as a resolution. Uh, saying to pay this individual and not as a claim because this is, it fits in, in, in the realm of librarian. She's studying this ESL and different programs to better our, our, our libraries. And nothing against any of the other individuals, but when you're taking a program, one, I've never seen your contract. Two, um, you're taking a program that's outside of what you're studying. Like if, if number thirty-six was taking a criminal justice class, I'm saying, man, like, you have to honor that. You're taking a biology class.
No, no, I'm with you. As long as we have the money and we can pay it.
Really, I, I did my, I looked through these backups and and I was, some of the things, I'm just like, why are the city paying certain, some of these certain classes? Like, I know we, we used to pay Chief Swolbs in the past, or Director Swolbs, and it was in his contract. He came in with a written signed document, like he went through the process, was studying classes that he knew would benefit him in the future. And to, you know, giving back in the city of Dearborn Heights. But what we're starting to see now is like, people are just leaving. You know, we, we just witnessed our former comptroller as for ten thousand dollars. You know, she said, oh, I could potentially sue you guys. And so, well, then you can potentially sue us. Now they're gone. They're out the door. Imagine we paid that ten thousand dollars and they were just gone. And they, they won't even with us for a year. This is an individual Saba that has been with us for many, many years. Studying a program that's gonna help benefit our libraries and our constituents and our residents. I think this is an easy yes.
Yeah, council chair, if I may. Um, the process is that the, the, the people put out the money first. So even if she had left, she would have paid ten thousand, she wouldn't have been reimbursed by the city. And there is a process and procedure from the two thousand of all, when it went to two thousand and one to the non-union members and it applies, there is a procedure to follow. Sometimes one class may not reflect. There's only part of it, but it's a whole, whole degree. Just for the record.
Thank you, Roger. I'm gonna let councilwoman, uh, I'm gonna ask him actually, go next.
Yeah, I think the difference in this is, is Director McCaffrey asked her to take the class to help her with her job. She just didn't voluntarily do it. She did it because of her boss asking her and that's a different story.
Sure. I, I agree. Thank you.
Thank you for the
Uh, Director McCaffrey, do you know, I mean, is, is maybe this a requirement towards getting a degree? Though she has to take certain classes, this is probably a requirement for her to get her uh, her degree.
I mean, I've called all these classes.
Yeah, it's a, it's a requirement to uh get a master's degree and a certain amount of master certified staff are required to be on staff to get state aid. Uh, so it benefits our libraries and institutions. So um, that's one reason to
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Good afternoon. Uh, I just wanted to remind you that, that some of these are also in union contracts. Uh, the bearer one is in the police union contract. So not approving these benefits is a violation of their union contract. Um, we have reviewed your request and we shared all the union contracts where tuition reimbursement has been implemented in the city. The HR director shared it. He also proposed a change that we can do. However, it is not something that we can implement with the employees that have already taken those benefits this current semester, right? So you kinda have to pay them and moving forward, starting next semester, you can start making some changes. And some of them, it's gonna be easy. With other ones, with the police unions, fire unions, any union, it's gonna be more complicated because you're gonna have to go into negotiations to make those changes. Uh, but again, from the administration, my recommendation would be pay out the fringe benefits that currently exist and make changes moving forward. But these benefits have already been implemented and it's hard to simply deny them right now.
Thank you, Mariana. I, I just want you to know, I go back to my statement. When, when you're gonna, if you're in the, if you're in the police union, and I didn't wanna give out the name, but you did. If you, if you, I know, I know. But you guys always tell us personnel, don't say names, don't say names. But, but, but I'm just, I was playing with that, what you guys say, but if somebody's gonna become a police officer in the city of Dearborn Heights and are taking a bunch of biology classes, you know, to, to get a biology degree.
It's not towards a biology degree. It's simply part of a degree requirement. You have general education classes that every employee has to take. And again, they're, they're all being approved by the directors. If not, they wouldn't be presented to you. So that's just a reminder. It's not just Mr. McCaffrey that has approval. Every other director
Saab here, we've never seen her contract. Like, it was
She doesn't have a contract. And I've already told you, HR has shared that with you. I've shared it three times at least.
Does not have a contract?
She has the same contract that I have shared with you three times, which is the same as the elected officials and directors and department heads fringe benefits. It has been shared with you multiple times.
Notice the fringe benefits, what was approved in the past and what, what we
That is our contract.
She does not have a contract?
No. You asked HR to look into that. He provided the response with you of all the contracts that are in existence. So again, I don't know what else you're looking for. We have provided every single contract that exists in the city. And we don't know what the holdup is anymore. We've also provided recommendations of how to make the amendments moving forward. But at this point, what else do you need in order to approve the benefits that are in existence this current semester?
Tell us where we're headed, where the money's coming from. And it's not, something that you guys as the administration set aside to be able to tell people you could take these classes. Show us where that is in that line item. All this still remaining money to be able to pay these individuals. And and then the, sure. But if you're gonna tell us, hey, well, you guys gotta pay them, but we don't have money, but you know, you guys have to figure it out.
Again, this comes from fringe benefits. That is a benefit. That's where all the salaries would come for, for this type of benefits.
But, but you're saying there's no contract?
There is a fringe benefits contract for our elected officials and directors.
Okay.
And I've shared that with you three times.
I'm not here to name names or, or directors, but I'd like to know when this indivi, this individual started with us and when uh, her courses started in college.
She's on her last semester.
I'd like to know when she started with us, if you can send me that.
Yep, I can give it to you right now, actually.
And when her, I, I'm removing it today. I, I, I want it removed, but uh, and uh
The fiscal year is ending, so like, that's, we're in a time crunch for this particular benefit time.
Well, frankly, it's, it's something, it's something that I wanna see. And I wanna see when her course actually started.
Okay. Again, if you could just send me the list of everything you want, but this is already going on for two months, that every meeting, there's a new requirement.
But you say directors approve uh, the benefits going to college. But every time I ask about the mayor's signature on here, somebody relates back and says, well, who has the authority? This is not the mayor's signature.
That is the mayor's
China's signature. It's, it's an auto pen signature.
That is the mayor's signature.
No, it's not.
Okay.
All right, guys. Thank you, Mariana. Any other discussion? I mean, I don't know. I didn't get the answer. Where, where's, where's the money coming from? That's uh, we asked that too, council chair. So I don't know. Do we have the money to pay it? I mean, we can approve it, but do we have the money to pay it? That's a million dollar question. Well, I have many, I don't know. We, we keep going around and around and we don't even have the money to pay it. And we're supposed to approve something that we don't have. I know, but we don't have the money. We don't have the money. What is it? You have payroll that's a million dollars. So All right, guys. There's a discussion here on the table, uh, to table thirty-six and thirty-seven. Um, motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded to, are you amending your motion, Councilman Saab?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Constant, are you amending? Are you seconding that? Uh, Councilman Constant?
I'm looking.
But I I think we should pay it, I think it's.
We have to know where the money's coming from. At least we know that the, we know that the librarian has the money and then. We don't know, we can't approve something, we can't pay for. I'll I'll.
He's signing paperwork.
I'll reluctantly second, removing thirty six and thirty seven.
Eliminate thirty six and thirty seven?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye. Those oppose?
No.
Okay, please take roll call.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Hassan Saad?
Yes.
Robert Coniston?
Yes.
Nancy Brier?
No.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Moby Dun?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, the moment everybody's been waiting for, nine A, City Engineer Deep, new fire station. Election, Councilman Sob, since you did your research.
I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approves site, is it two A for Beach?
Two A.
Two A. And authorize the initiation of design phases outlined in nine A.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constant. I'm sorry, Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? I was reading your name, by the way, Cons- uh, Councilman Constance. Any discussion on this?
Council chair, Councilman, I just wanna thank Councilman Sob for bringing this forward again. I mean, I voted yes on it last time and I guess I did my homework before. But thank you for bringing this forward and let's go on and build that fire station for our firefighters and uh. We do thank you for your service and definitely we have the utmost respect and appreciation for you guys.
Thank you. I will just add a couple of things. This is, this is a very tough decision. I mean, if there's anybody knows who loves their firefighters, it's. I'm one of the biggest advocates. I've never voted anything against our firefighters. And if my vote turns into a no today, it's still not against our firefighters, but it's most importantly, that I stood my ground in my word and saying. Once, once we allow one thing to be built on that golf course. It's no longer gonna be considered a golf course. It's not gonna be a golf course, a fire station and every other thing, and it's gonna become a domino effect. To me, there hasn't been any type of engineering water studies. There's been nothing that tells me that in fifteen years, this thing might not fall apart. And then here comes my kids who's gonna be here, our future treasurer from GMA and saying, hey, I remember sitting in this council meeting and Mo Baydun was talking about it. Who knows, I might be the Councilman Constance and staying on here with you. The the reality is, I'm gonna give you your your moment here, Councilman, but the reality is. I wholeheartedly want a new fire station for our fire department. We've waited three years to bring it down to the wire right before we're about to spend the money. We should have had this discussion three years ago when we got the money. Administration didn't bring this to us. We've always had, for three years, we've had the fire station, for three years, we've had the money. We waited three years though to have the discussion. We had three years to make the digs. We said we were waiting on money from the city engineer, or we're waiting for money from Rashida Tlaib to be able to do our, you know, our testing. I had a conversation with Rashida Tlaib this weekend at a funeral. Said you guys could easily do the testing. I also had a conversation with Aaron Burns just yesterday with with our treasurer. And ten million dollars is more than enough to be able to build what we wanna do. West End just got one for seven point three million. Dearborn Heights is asking for additional three point five, which is most likely not going to receive. Reality is, we have ten million dollars to be able to build a fire station, and if we could have potentially use an additional million or maybe two million. Bought other parts of that we don't own, because it's not gonna cost you the entire ten million, but the ten million could have been used for a million dollars to buy land. And nine million to build something, but we waited to come down to the wire. That's the reality. That's the story that you're not being told. It's done, we're standing before here on another issue where we're last second having to make a decision. We could have, none of us here were consulted. Say, hey, what are your thoughts? What can we do? How can we help? We weren't, but yet we're the fiduciary duty for the city. That's that that's the hard reality that nobody's talking about. So for our firefighters, I will always stand with you guys. But I've also gotta stand by my word by saying, when we, when we made this vote on on the golf course. I said I'll never vote on anything that allows anything to be built from a home, a fire station, a dog park. Other than it being a golf course, because it's a green space. The more we build on a green spaces, the more flooding we're gonna, we're gonna end up with. Maybe you're not gonna see floodings in the in 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 the neighborhoods. Let me tell you something, the the money, the three point five million dollars that we used ARPA funds to fix the golf course. It's gonna find its way down to trickle somewhere and it's gonna trickle into where you spent the three point five million dollars. And we can nod our heads and say no, and we can agree to disagree. I hope that it does pass. The reality is, I hope it passes because I feel that our firefighters' lives are in danger and you're right, public safety is a concern. But I also believe it's gonna cause more flooding. It's in two years down the line, we're gonna hear how something's flooding again. That's my opinion on things. Right, so my my vote is, has to stand firm where I stood last time. Not because I don't want a new fire station, because I wholeheartedly support the men and women in our fire department. And I appreciate and applaud Councilman Sob for doing his research, because he did. And he called me and he, he said, hey, man, like, you you really gotta change your vote. And I said, it's not about the fire station, it's not about public safety. But my word, standing here before we gave, when we awarded uh the golf course, stood here before every resident said. You have my word. This goes to the Isa brothers and Jason. You're not going to see me ever voting to build anything on that golf course. So I'm gonna stand firm where I is what I promise.
Council chair?
Councilman Sob?
I wanna put a few things in record, our facts. Fact number one, testing was done. So you saying testing is not done, that's false. If any resident that wants a water engineer to go out. Costs about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for testing. If anybody's got a truck to write to the city, we're glad they do it.
We have money for that, from the ten million dollars.
Council chair, you're also putting two things at risk. Number one is the condition of the current fire station, that our firefighters are living. We know, you know, I know, it's not livable. Number two, frankly, I'll tell you this until any resident, saving someone's life, saving a kid out of a fire. And having a fire station there is worth more than the whole entire golf course combined. You cannot pro, you cannot put land or price on public safety. And I'll say that over and over. I wasn't here when you guys voted that you would give your word. You could stipulate any motion we file or approve, not to have anything else built on the golf course outside of anything for the fire department, like a firehouse. Or anything else. That that that's, that's a simple claim there. But the thing is that we're playing here, it's emotions. You're playing emotions and politics with people's safety.
I'm not playing.
No, no, I'm saying, up on this, and in the city itself, that's what's going on. I took it out of my way. And I bothered Mr. Deep how many times in the past couple of weeks, more than I've called him in two years. I did my research and the information provided, as for waitrim being a part of it, they weren't. The testing was done by an independent company. A matter of fact, um, I mean, I think you, uh, the president over there walked the maintenance center of the golf course. And that's the lowest part in the back of the golf course. It does not flood. You said about seventeen feet higher than the highest point where the ponds flood. You would need either a dam to flood or a tsunami to hit. You'd gotta be elevated with Warren Avenue. That's how how high the flooding would have to be for the fire station to flood. And that fire station's gonna be elevated on a different elevation. Again, we go back that, we say we support our first responders. Uh, we support them how? They're living in conditions where that fire station, they might wake up tomorrow and the and the inside walls might collapse. Those fire chucks are are pretty heavy.
Don't put that on the city.
No, no, I'm not putting on the city council, but we have a duty also to put emotions aside. And and make an educated vote on public safety. We complain we don't have enough police officers in cars and we're working towards fully staffing our police department. We just staffed our fire department. Fully staffed it. But if that fire station closes, you're gonna have Inkster, Garden City, Dearborn in Detroit responding to the North End. Because first off, you can't send every firefighter to the sob station where it's gonna be over over capacity. You gotta do your numbers and you gotta put the equation is, is the golf course worth anybody's life? And it's not. Bluntly, it's not. And whatever residents are gonna think because of the history they have with it, it's just not. And you're gonna say in fifteen years, the money we invested in it, in fifteen years, I guarantee you the infrastructure in this city will be updated.
Hope so. Council chair?
Councilman Constance?
Thank you. I I agree with Councilman Sob. I think we have to rely on our experts, our fire chief, our city engineer. Um, the city owns the golf course property. There's still a lot of room on the golf course for golf. I mean, we're not talking about. Uh, we're talking about a thirty-six hole golf course. There's still plenty of room. Well, I I think uh site two is a wise decision.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Council chair?
Councilwoman Brier?
I'd like to thank Councilman Sob for doing that extra work to verify what we thought we knew before. There's nothing more important than our gentlemen that are taking care of us every day and protecting us. They shouldn't live the way they're living now. So we've gotta go with site number two.
Anyone else? This is the moment of truth. Here we go, motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Ahmad for the new fire station two A, you said?
Yes, Beach Davy.
Beach Davy.
Council chair, before we go there, I would like to stipulate in this order that nothing else can be built on site. Other than involves.
Have to put, you'd have to actually put that to the voters to be able to vote on that. Even if we put a resolution, you have to put a deed restriction, it'd have to go before the voters and then they would have to make that vote, according to. When Gary was here on our our last meeting. I mean, not our last meeting, but when we were doing the thing on the fire station, I mean, uh.
That's on housing.
No, it was a deed restriction, it had to be go, it had to go before the voters. And I remember Mr. Easton met Shank and Gary were kinda going back and forth and they didn't want it. And then we'd also have to reopen up the contract with the Eastern Brothers, so technically. Us even putting that in the motion, wanna make a change.
I'm gonna bring it back at the next meeting as a mo- as a resolution, or as a motion.
Okay.
Okay.
But two A, to approve two A's, the new fire station, all in favor, please state aye. Those oppose? No. And clerk, please take roll call.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Nancy Brier?
Yes.
Robert Coniston?
Yes.
Hassan Saad?
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
No.
In Moby Dun?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much, congratulations. Next up, City Engineer Deep, Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, DWSRF. Twenty twenty-four Water Main Replacement, Change Order Number Two.
Council chair?
Councilman Ahmad?
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approves Change Order Number Two to the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. Twenty twenty-four Water Main Replacement Project in the amount of sixty-two thousand one oh seven, which presents additional costs. Poured by the contractor for materials and effort that were unforeseen and not part of the original contract. Uh, the original contract includes all pay items that are part of the change order with the exception of the two inch service lead that's outlined in nine. Uh, dash B, second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Sob. Any discussion?
Council chair?
Yes, sir.
Just about, uh, with the, in the backup is is shows Change Order Number One, and here was, is this, did we change it before? Is that by Paul?
No, no, it's, um, well, first, thank you for, um, the fire station, finally put us on the right track so we can get moving. Uh, regarding the one and two, we actually, uh, Change Order One is contractual. There was a one. Which is where we added the ARPA money, our ARPA money to the this. But contractually, because this is a fifty fifty project, we pay fifty percent of every uh cost and the state pays fifty percent. So contractually, this is only one. This is Change Order One. The state doesn't care where we got our money from, so for. Our purposes, it's Change Order Two, because it went before you to add the ARPA money. But as far as the state's concerned, it's Change Order One. So contractually, it's Change Order One. It's. It doesn't change anything. It's just that Change Order One before you was to use our ARPA money for our portion. And then the state money for their portion. So the state.
Yeah, I mean, to be, to be clear, I'm really confused.
It's not. Sorry, one, it it technically, for the contract itself, this is Change Order One, as a contract.
Okay.
But for purposes of presenting to the council, when we added the money, the ARPA money, we used Change Order uh process. So the city is calling it Change Order Two, but the state is Change Order One. Contractually, it's only Change Order.
So why do we have to call it Change Order Two?
So I can get the money from the state. Because that that stuff that we approve, every invoice actually goes to the state to pay.
For the sixty-two thousand, after it comes from the state?
Yes, sir. Everything we we pay goes to the state.
Where we can distinguish that? Like you said, contractual, if something, something.
Two, then the state will not pay, say, where's one? See what I mean? So that's the.
For the records, when we go back in.
What? I I'm I'm just, uh, it it it's so, we trying to make it so, I mean, every invoice we pay, we put, this is true for all, um, um, um. Reimbursement. So when we pay invoices, we send them to the state. After your approval, we send them to the state. We get a hundred thousand, they send us fifty percent. So this is how it usually works. And if I confuse them, I delay payment from the state. I really don't wanna do that. You get it? You get it? Anybody else has any more questions? More questions? Did most of you before?
He went to a restroom, take over.
Did he say have a question? I know. So are you guys okay with just having it, uh, Change Order Number Two?
It makes sense.
It does?
But unforeseen.
I'm still confused about it, I don't know. I'm sorry, I don't know why I'm not getting it. So internally, for us, yeah, let, make Mariana's good.
Okay.
She's good.
Sorry, I'm gonna try to simplify it. So we had a contract. And then here internally, we changed that contract to add nine million dollars for the ARPA portion, right? So what we presented to the state as our finalized contract was a total of the thirteen million dollars. So to them, we have one signed contract for thirteen million dollars. This is the first change order to that thirteen million dollar project. So for them, it's the first change order. For us, it's the second because we added that nine million.
Okay, now I understand. So why we call it now just two here?
For their records, because they have already a Change Order One for that contract.
The backup, the original backup. I'm just gonna say.
Yes, the original backup was for one three million, but then the final contract was for the thirteen million when we added the nine. So the existing contract is thirteen million dollars and that's the contract that we're working off of.
Are you good, Melon Cor? Any more questions, discussions? You have a question?
No, I was waiting for a vote, I've got.
Okay, okay. Uh, let's take this to the bow, whoever's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, the eyes have it. Moving on to nine C, City Engineer Deep, DTE LED Replacement Phase Two, Warren Avenue.
Council chair?
Go ahead, Councilman.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approved the purchase agreement between the city and DTE Electric Company for the total cost of. One hundred, three thousand, five hundred, twenty-three dollars and seventeen cents unauthorized the mayor and the clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city. In addition, authorize the mayor, comptroller, clerk to send a necessary warrants and the treasury issue payment from the street light. Street Park Light, LG account number one oh one, two zero zero, nine two six, zero zero zero. And the remaining funds for the purchase will be three hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And eighty-three cents is outlined in nine C.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion?
Council chair?
Sir.
Oh, never mind, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I'm good.
Okay. Any other decisions? Or any other discussions? All in favor, please state aye.
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 Those oppose? The eyes have it, motion carries. Real quick, Mr. Deep, can you actually just give a little quick briefing on this?
Sure.
So, um, i- if you recall, about two years ago, we decided to move the the, all the street lighting under the DTE. Um, community lighting to uh LED for, you know, saving on the street. You do know, um, um, community lighting is where we pay for all our street lights and DTE maintains, provide power. Maintain them, if you, if they get hit, they replace them. Um, the entire city was done, uh, as phase one, minus Warren Avenue, and the reason for that is Warren Avenue. Um, years ago was uh considered a downtown district and special lights were installed and these lights were not DTE. Um, um, standard, so DTE did not support them, uh, they did not have them. So they said we will do that as a separate phase, meaning that we have, instead of just replacing the light fixtures. The entire light pole will have to be replaced for them to maintain it. They updated, the, under this contract, we will update from, um, Mayburn to Berwyn. Um, the area of of streetlights and that's the current, um. Non-DTE standard will be replaced with DTE LED and they will be maintained by.
I kinda like those nice light fixtures that we have.
Yeah, but they, unfortunately, you can't find them. So it's it's, so that's why you have multiple, if you drive Warren Avenue past. Uh, Telegraph West, you're gonna see multiple, because they don't, I don't know where we bought them from, they do not exist, they're not street standard. Uh, the lighting level is also not standard, so the current LED, um, DTE standards have a better light. Uh, uh, dispersion and they cover better and then plus they're standard, so they can.
Do we have like any, I know, I I I, there was an email from Manny Baydun the other day, our. Deputy comptroller right now, or interim comptroller director, saying about that there was a master plan, then he said, oh, no, like. That was only for us. Do we have like some type of plan for Warren that was expected to be one day, and then the city administration kind of is like, oh, no, we don't want to do that? Do we have any plans for Warren at all?
Yes, so, so we're currently in the award phase, because I'm still working with this for, for, uh, updating, well, actually, an actual master plan, but, um, uh, the Warren Avenue. Do you want to say it, Dan, come on in.
So that was a mistake by me sending it out to all city members, because I did not know how to use Microsoft Teams, and I said, send to all city members, even the clerk and everybody else got it. Uh, so we're in the current phase of awarding the master and environmental resiliency plan, as well as the infrastructure resiliency plan. Uh, both of those awards will be, uh, presented to council within the next month or so, after we do interviews with the candidates.
Okay, let me ask you, did anybody from the planning commission have any insight on being able to maybe help construct the, the, um, master plan, like? The, the reality is, we have this commission for that reason.
We haven't awarded yet, so soon, so we're, the way we're doing it, we're getting, we're getting a grant for it, so it, we're, we're getting the state money for it. So we're doing it by state standard, meaning that there was a qualification based, you interview the top four, and then the award actually has to be approved by you first and then the state. So we're doing it because of the money situation, we, uh, otherwise, we'll have to fund it ourselves. We're getting eighty percent, I believe, Mariana, eighty, twenty? So eighty, twenty of, of the contract award is being paid by, uh, by the state. So that's why it's taken us a little longer, um, this gentleman's helping me with, we did our first interview yesterday, and we have, uh, uh, three more interviews, to, this is the selection process. After you select a, a, a consultant, you, you're presented to the state, get approved, and then to you.
My thoughts on it, real quick, Mariana, if I may. I mean, if, if we're consulting with these people, you know, uh, if we're consulting with these people that are telling us, we have this experience, we have that experience, I would like, I'd like some insight on that as well. I'd like them to actually, for the city, like, let it present, let the residents hear, let, let people see what's going on.
They will be, they will be involved, stakeholders meetings is actually part of it, it's just the selection first, the selection process.
And the selection process, I, I would like to know who's coming to present, say, hey, I would like to bid for the city of Dearborn Heights, and this is what I have to offer, like, let us hear a little bit, let them come present before us, I mean, I think it's a good idea to be able to hear from them. We could do a study session and let, let residents ask them questions, let them get, like, give them fifteen minutes each to present. I mean, let's be a little bit more transparent, I'm not saying you're not, I'm just saying, let's, let's, let us have a little bit of insight on it.
Okay.
We'll do that, yeah.
All right.
So, again, they're all gonna come in front of you once the proposals are finalized, uh, right now, they're still in the beginning stages of the bid process, but as usual, you will have your opportunity to see all of the.
Six, and let them come in and present before us.
Okay, we can add that to the steps, but again, we have to follow the state guidelines for bid awards, and then we can add on top of it whatever you want afterwards.
Just the, the top six, I mean, look, man, we've been asking.
We're all interested, and, and these fours are currently being evaluated, four proposals, this is in my office, and then this, three, all right, three of them, uh, for that particular project, so we'll put us on it, we'll have, we'll have a make fifteen minute presentation to you. Not gonna ask questions, right?
Man, I, I feel like, the city, and not forget me, but like, let the residents be able to get some insight on it, and maybe they want to give their opinion on, on something.
No problems.
That's fair. Yeah, I mean, let, let, our taxpayers be engaged and involved, and you know, everybody has, has a thought on, on our, on our city, we live here.
I do, I, I, I'm, I agree with you, by, and just to make sure you understand, part of the plan itself is the company going out into the public and asking residents questions, seeing their concerns. So the company, part of their.
Let's see which company we like.
Yeah, I know, I'm just letting you know, like, also, when they do implement the master plan, part of the implementation phase is telling the residents, hearing their concerns, seeing what they think about their city and what can be fixed.
Thank you. All right, guys, sorry, I know I get a little off topic. Uh, next up is nine D, Department of IT Director Cooper and Court Administrator Atkins, replacement of court computers.
Council chair?
Council chair? Councilman Ahmad?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the purchase and payment of twenty one Dell Pro Micro QCM twelve fifty fourteen Dell Pro sixteen plus and fourteen Dell Pro dog WD twenty five from Dell for a total of thirty thousand, three hundred and forty six dollars and sixty eight cents. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from account one oh one, one three zero, nine eight one, zero, zero, zero. The funds remaining in the account after purchase will be seven thousand, six hundred and fifty three and thirty two cents, as outlined in nine dash D.
Second, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Sob, any discussion? Uh, I know this is something that Michelle Atkins in the court has been asking for, they came before their budget, she said she was gonna figure out what money that they didn't spend to be able to purchase these, so I'm glad that I'm seeing this before us, and it was before the end of the fiscal year, so that the money didn't go into the general fund, that the court's still being able to use it. I wish Michelle and her staff, uh, great success in their new computers. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it, motion carries. Congratulations, Director Cooper, congratulations, Michelle Atkins. Next up is Park Recreation Director, the.
The Bosnian.
The Bosnian. By the way, I've been saying it, I've been practicing. The Bosnian, uh, purchase and payment of the Richard A Young Center vending machine.
Council chair?
Chair? Councilman Sob?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the purchase and payment of two selective vending machines for the Richard A Young Center from Sam's Club, as the lowest quote is nine thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars. In addition, authorize the mayor and the comptroller to sign necessary warrants, and the treasurer to issue payments from account number one oh one, six nine two, eight eight seven, zero, 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 with the remaining funds in the account after the purchase will be thirty dollars and thirty nine cents, as outlined in nine C.
Second, motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constand, any discussion? Long overdue, I want to say, four years ago, I came to city council for my first meeting, I walked into the Richard A Young Center, four years, four and a half, actually. And I said, I walked up to a vending machine and said, invest at your own risk, is what it stated. That means if you put money and you go and get something, you made that investment, knowing that we knew this machine didn't work and people were still taking risks. It's worse than, that's the worst gamble I've ever seen, it's worse than the casinos. Uh, I'm surprised Lou wasn't there, uh, but the, the reality is, this is long overdue, I've asked for this many times. Now, I don't know the cost, you know, analysis, but I left it to our, our director to be able to say, hey, it's better for us to rent out a machine, it's better for us to purchase. My only concern, fear is that when we purchase these machines, five years, are we gonna have to purchase these machines again, because we know we're gonna see a sign that says, invest at your own risk? Um, and so like, would it be better, or are we gonna be making money? I don't know, but I, I left it to you, I had a conversation with the director, he told me this was the better route. So I, I'm gonna follow his direction and his leadership on this. Any other discussion? All right, let's not purchase at our own risk anymore, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it, motion carries, congratulations, director. Next up is Parks and Recreation Director, Spirit Festival twenty twenty five contract with Antonio.
Council chair?
Councilman? Wait, Constand, I'm sorry, you're the only one that said it.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the twenty twenty five Spirit Festival contract between the city of Dearborn Heights and Antonio's, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city, as outlined in nine F.
Second, motion made by Councilman Constand, seconded by Councilman Sob, any, any discussion?
Council chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I want to thank Antonio's for doing this, they've been doing it since two thousand and four. This year, they will cover up to seven thousand dollars of any loss we had at the festival. Um, they've been, like I said, they've done it every year since two thousand and four, except two thousand, twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, when we had COVID. Uh, Mama Rita is really well known in the community, she's a good-hearted person, and we appreciate what she does for us.
Council chair? Yes, sir. Thank you, council chair, actually, I, I have issues with this contract, I do want to thank Antonio's, I appreciate the business and all they do in our community. But our spirit festival has been making money. And this is basically, we're just advertising for somebody in case, and for free, but in case we don't make money, they, they jump in and pay the money. Uh, the fact is, this, that this contract was presented even after the festival, but, you know, I don't like that, but I even, I had to talk with the director, him being new here, and, uh, everything has been already set for the festival, so that was too late to change the contract. But the other issue that I have in the contract is, they still have the first right to refuse it for next year. So I don't know if, Mr. Ferne, can you look, take a look at it, and if we can take this off, because I'm not voting yes on this, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna renew this contract.
Well, I, I actually have one other question on this too, let's just say next year, company says, says, hey, man, like, I'm just gonna straight up give you guys twenty five thousand dollars. We allowed to tell them we can't accept it based on this contract, we gotta be careful. You know, like I, I said this before, Dearborn, for its homecoming festival, takes fifty thousand dollar sponsor, thirty thousand dollar sponsor, a twenty thousand dollar sponsor, and a bunch of thousand dollar sponsors. I mean, obviously, the, the, anybody that donates fifty thousand dollars in Dearborn gets their advertisement everywhere. Uh, and, and, and I will tell you, Antonio's has always, and, and the reason why Antonio's is here and, and what it does is, a long time ago, the history is, we weren't gonna be able to afford the Spirit Festival anymore. Antonio said, I want you guys to do it, if there's anything that you guys lose money on, I mean, they came from a very good place and I respect them for that. I feel like right now, if, you know, we have a great director, he's feeling a lot of ideas that he's doing in Dearborn, they were able to capture some money, can we also capture some of that money? That's the question I think that Councilman Ahmad was kind of reaching for.
Because if I remember correctly, last year, we made over sixty thousand dollars. So, and we made seventy five this year, we made more money than we did last year.
Council chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I think, you know, Antonio's has been doing this since two thousand and four, I don't know how many times they've had to pay over the years, but I don't remember anybody else trying to stop up to do it, and they've always been there. We don't have to go out and solicit anybody, they're guaranteed. Um, I think all the years that they did cover, yeah, they didn't have to cover the last couple of years, but that doesn't matter. They've been there when we needed them the most in the past, since two thousand and four.
Council chair?
Council chair? I'm gonna go to Councilman Constand and then Councilman Sob.
Uh, you know, the Spirit Festival is the brainchild of former, uh, Recreation Director Ken Gribel. And there was a couple of years where we had bad rain, and we, we lost money, there was a lot of fighting over who the ride company was gonna be and different things, so, um, uh, the perfect is the enemy of the good, but I think they've, they've done a good job. Luckily, we've had good weather, good crowds, so I, I think we should continue this.
Yeah, they believed in us when no one else stepped up, like.
Yeah, but we, we've become a lot more of a growing community, but you can't say that Dearborn Heights has got a lot more businesses.
Well, we need.
Two thousand and four, we didn't have that many businesses.
We need to have loyalty towards people who supported us when we needed them.
And, and we're saying we can keep an agreement with Antonio's, we don't just have to limit it to only Antonio's, I think. I think we can open it and say, we can have more than just Antonio.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with.
I, I'm all for giving Antonio's, I mean, look, Antonio's, with, without even having a contract, should always be supported, because they showed their loyalty to, to.
They were there in the hard times, during the, um, you know, when people were losing their houses, they were still supporting.
What I'm saying is, but if, if, if a small business owner says, let's call Rand Asl, comes on and says, hey, guys, I, I want, I want to donate, like, I want to be a part of this, I, I believe in, in, in the growth of Dearborn Heights, we shouldn't tell them, no, 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 we only have a five-year, we have a five-year contract with Antonio's, and, you know, that's a monopoly, in my opinion.
I don't even know if we had anybody else step up and offer.
Council chair?
Yes, sir.
Um, we did have somebody, somebody did ask this question, a few weeks ago, but I was like, it's too late, uh, signs are already out. But I believe next year, we have sponsored their ruin.
I, I don't, I, I haven't heard of anyone.
I, I have, I have actually multiple businesses, and actually, one of them is in the south end. And they asked, and now that, when I read this, it, it's really not fair. We should be able to put it out and solicit, and put it, and not people, hey, how about if you have a business down in the city, comes and says, hey, I'm gonna give you twenty five thousand dollars, but my name is Sam's. I understand loyalty to, to a business that's in the city, we've supported the business, too, they've supported us, yes, but I believe we should give other businesses opportunity also.
I, I think Antonio's will always support and, and always stand in the city, I think it's not fair to say, nor Antonio's, but I think it shouldn't be Antonio's, with also powered by other individuals that say they want to come forward.
Council chair?
You know, I know, like, for example, and, and I'm so sorry to cut you off, but like, in Detroit, here you have, you know, Dan Gilbert, that comes out and says, powered by Rocket Mortgage. Twenty years ago, they weren't there, now they're saying, hey, I, I want to invest, so we don't want to, we don't want to lose on that as well, yeah.
Council chair?
Yes, sir.
Um, it's just like the city of Dearborn, none of the other city does, they have a level of sponsorship, and what they pay, like, you, you want your name on top, it's gonna cost you this much, you want your name on the second row, it's gonna cost you this much. And you want your name all the way on the bottom, that's how you sponsor, we just don't commit to one person, I'm sorry. And, and, and I have, I have nothing, but I, I hate Antonio's all the time, I have nothing but respect for their family. But I believe we should give businesses opportunity too, I mean, this, man, there might be a business outside of the city that wants to advertise in our city. There's nothing wrong with it, if they, if it's bringing in revenue and the gross is going up, I'm all for it, we should not limit it to one contract, and I'm sorry, I can't support this.
Council chair? Yes, sir. I have a question, director, don't we have, I thought there was insurance for losing profit, stuff like this, correct? And I think, Director Kim, the.
The only, well, we have liability insurance, obviously, for it. Um, the other insurance, the key part is rain, rain, rain will kill us, if we had three days of rain, we're, we're gonna be in bad shape, fortunately, that, that hasn't happened. So we do have rain insurance, according to the contract, for just Saturday evening. So if it rains a quarter inch on Saturday, we, we're covered to some extent, I mean, we spend two thousand on the policy, it gives us ten thousand back, so we're really getting eight thousand from the rain insurance, it just helps hedge us a little bit. Um, but, uh, that's, you know, where we are, I mean, we're, we're moving in the right direction, you know, will we ever lose money? It would probably be a thunderstorm for, you know, five days would be the only thing that could, that could kill us, you know?
But at, at the same time, this contract is basically saying, they would be the only sponsors, and if we lose money, they can cover it up to seven thousand dollars. So where, where we say we can have more sponsors, or we can have sponsors that pay money upfront, you know, to be, to be.
Seven thousand dollars wouldn't cover us.
Yeah, I mean, right now, I mean, we can have so many sponsors to be, to be put on that sign and make more money for the city. Uh, so I stand with my decision, I think this is all right, for twenty twenty five, it's already done, I can approve this contract for twenty twenty five, but I, I need to move that, uh, first.
There's, there's a, there's a limit of five years on this.
No, no, uh.
Twenty five, twenty five thousand.
I know, I know, guys, twenty five.
What do you see the five years?
See, I don't see the five years.
I, I see a first right to refuse it for twenty twenty six, do you see five years? Maybe we should table this and have Roger look at it, and take, I mean, just make it for this year, whatever passed. And then it's already passed, do we need even to approve a contract if it's already, I think, passed?
Correct, yeah, you, you have nothing to lose at this point, the, the festival's over, we know there's, there's no loss, so.
Did you have, did you have time to look over it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
You know, and also with Director Bosnick and.
Like to see opportunity for other businesses.
I understand.
We might have a law firm that wants to sponsor the office for a hundred thousand dollars, for example.
Councilman, this is not in the contract, this contract forever just passed, let's just make it for twenty twenty five, already passed, we approve it. Next year, it's a new, it's a new spirit festival, new contracts, new people, new sponsors, we move on.
What I'm saying is that. Gives them the right to twenty twenty six?
That's what I'm saying, we're taking this out, we're taking this out, we're only making it for twenty twenty five, and let's table this, let's, let's address all this.
This is. Prove it at the next city council.
Okay.
Refer to.
Yeah, let's refer this back to administration, then we can bring it, clear the air, give all the opportunity that we can, this is, this is a great discussion, and I appreciate it.
Okay, sounds good.
This is a great discussion, isn't it? Uh, who's gonna pay for it? Uh, Councilman Constand, uh, it's on Councilman Constand.
I move that we, uh, we refer this back, uh, to our Recreation Director, City Attorney, and, uh, bring it back up at a later date.
Second. Motion to refer this back by Councilman Constand, seconded by Councilman Sob, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it, motion carries. Parks and Recreation Director, the Ba. The Bosnian. The Bosnian. Wayne County Parks Village Extension Number Two, Camp Field Center, Marquis sign.
Council chair?
Councilman Ahmad?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the extension for improvements to Central Park, as approved by Wayne County Commission on October twentieth, twenty twenty two by Resolution Number twenty twenty two dash seven three seven, extending the original agreement from June thirty eighth, twenty twenty five, to a term to end on March thirty first, twenty twenty six, for the completion of the improvement to Central Park, in addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement as outlined in nine dash G.
Second, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Constand, any discussion? Um. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Those oppose? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is Police Chief Hader, Police Department Auto Auction.
Council chair?
Councilman Sob?
I move, uh.
Go on a second.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council.
Nothing more.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the auction for police department vehicles through JT towing, a third-party auction house. The vehicles will be purchased in the forfeiture.
Anyway. These vehicles were purchased, I'm sorry, let me start just over, my mic was off. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the auction of police department vehicles through JT towing, a third-party auction house, these vehicles were purchased with forfeiture funds, and once auctioned, the proceeds will be returned to the forfeiture account GL two six five, zero, 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 six, three, six, two, zero, zero, as outlined. zero-zero-zero-six-three-six-two-zero-zero as outlined in nine H.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is Controller's Office, Budget Amendment. Anybody?
Council Chair?
Yep.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the budget amendments as outlined in nine I.
Motion made by Councilman Conson, seconded by- Do you have a second? One, once.
Council Chair, I just, uh, no, I'll have a second for discussion.
Second by Councilman Saab. Open up for discussion.
Mary. Any of this, because it says no fund balance used to cover expenses. Does this go across the board on every account?
Yeah, so, uh, for the A F G grant, uh, reimbursement, as well as the M E D C grant expenses, those aren't gonna happen, so those are net zero effect. Uh, for the Safe Street Paul and Safe Route School, those are actually gonna be budgeted in the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year, so they're being removed out of this fiscal year. And then we have, um, fire contractual services being, um, offsetted by fire department medical supplies, as well as, I believe, motor fuel. And then finally, we have D T E bills that are outstanding that need to be paid. They're covered by the additional uh, buffer that we have in the streetlight G L accounts, so nothing's gonna be taken out of fund balance for this.
Thank you.
I just wanna say, I'm so sorry that I am leaving the meeting a little bit early. I do wanna excuse myself, Councilman Ahmad, Council Chair, for time will be taking over the rest of the meeting. I hope you all have an amazing day. God bless you and Happy Father's Day, everybody. Sorry for the interruption.
Thank you, Council Chair.
So maybe-
Yes.
And and red, it says three million dollars and sixty-six dollars.
So that's just a change, it's not, the issue is that some of those accounts are revenue accounts, so they're offsetted exactly by the expense account uh, that they match to. So the M E D C expense account matches with the A F G reimbursement account. And then you have the Safe Streets for All expense and the Safe Route to School expense met by the revenue received from there. So those two items get removed. In reality, the only ones you should be looking at are the D T E uh, utility accounts, and then the fire contractual services, contractual services account, so that they can cover expenses that they expect before June thirtieth.
I I wish you did, uh, give us a tour at the end of the amended budget, so basically just trying to add all these numbers together. So is it basically moving, how much you're moving?
Uh, so we are moving thirty-two thousand out of streetlights into, uh, three different utility accounts.
Okay.
And then we're moving fire ma- medical supplies and fire motor fuel, fifteen thousand to contractual services, I believe. I believe it's fifteen or fourteen. And then the right, and the other two, and the other four accounts, which are the A F G and the M E D C, that was for the firing fire truck that isn't gonna be done anymore, so that is being removed out of the budget. The revenue and expense account, expense are being removed.
Removed, removed completely, like, uh, why are we removing it completely?
It's not happening, those, and that is not gonna be happening anymore.
So this is, a grant is not coming in, you mean?
No, but the expense is also not coming in. We're not, we're not purchasing that fire vehicle.
And grand, but this is, what about the grant, what happened to the grant?
The grant was available, available, I-
But we're not gonna use it, that's what you're saying?
No, sorry about that. The chief can speak more into that part, but he told me that that is not gonna happen anymore. They're not expecting to do it.
What's up? It's not awarded, so we didn't get it. Is that the same thing with the, the fire M E D C grant expense?
Yeah, then that expense was for the fire truck that was supposed to be reimbursed by the grant. But since the grant isn't gonna be-
Ah, this is the expense account, okay, sorry. Okay, what about the-
That's why in parentheses, I put revenue, and the line items that are being reduced.
I got it.
I know, it's a little confusing because- It's it, it's hard to do it in a way that, because if I decrease revenues and decrease expenses, it looks like I'm actually decreasing by one point eight million dollars. On on paper, it looks like I'm decreasing by one point eight million dollars.
Sorry, but I don't know how totally I missed this, but, uh, okay, so we're taking thirty-two thousand out of the street lighting. We're taking five thousand out of the controller salaries, controller salaries, yes, okay. So the fire grant, nine hundred thirty thousand, we're not getting that grant, it goes with the expenses.
Yes.
Then you go down to the state grants, S S four A revenue.
Yes.
So what what are we doing there?
Those are actually budgeted in twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal years.
So you're taking those out too?
Yes, they're gonna happen within July and August, I believe.
Okay, so where's, where's the expense account for that?
It should say the S S four expense account, and then Safe Street-
I I don't see it. Do you see it?
You don't see it?
I don't see it.
Give me one second.
Anybody see it? Or expense?
Microphone's on. Resume.
Give me one moment.
Yeah. Is there, is there a rush on this, like the-
Um, the only one that's really a rush is the D T E bills, but, and the controller budget amendments, since we're trying to get a part-time, uh, person just temporarily assist us with some duties, so I don't have to rely on time around for-
Can we, can we table this to the next meeting, so you can fix all the stuff and bring it back?
One second.
Let's pay the bills, though. I don't even see a D T E here, where, is it the street lighting you mean, so? I mean, we're running off on public roads.
Yeah, Safe Streets for All and Safe Route to School, the expense accounts is already under the revenue.
So the Safe Streets for All and the Safe Streets to School?
That's an expense, and the revenue is a state grants, S S four A revenue.
Yeah, but that's five hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-four.
That's because we have a match for that one. We, for that one, we have an approved match that the city councils already approved, and we are, we are moving forward with the two projects, they're just not occurring in this fiscal year. They're budgeted for in this fiscal year, so as a formality, we must remove them out of this budget to not show that we are gonna receive the revenues or not gonna be using the expenditure, so that the states, Safe Streets for All and Safe Route to School, and then the Fire A F G grant and Fire M E D C grant expenses, those are formalities, so that we remove them out of the budget, since they're not gonna happen during this fiscal year.
Gotcha. And so where do they go then?
Next fiscal year. So, again, the M E D C grant is not gonna happen.
This year.
It's not gonna happen, it didn't get awarded.
Okay.
The Safe Road to School
Mm-hmm.
is gonna happen next fiscal year, and it's already in your budget, it was already approved.
Okay.
So we're just, again, as a formality, removing it from here, because all the expenses will happen next fiscal year.
That's the same thing for, uh, Safe Streets for All and Safe Routes to School?
Correct, so that first line item, state grants S S for a revenue, that's where the reimbursement was gonna come for the eighty percent of the grant.
Okay.
And then Safe Streets for All and Safe Routes to School are the two grants that we had a twenty percent match.
Okay.
Um, so that makes a little bit more-
That's why I didn't-
Yeah, it's a little bit more, but regardless, the expenditures are not gonna happen whatsoever, and the revenues are not gonna happen whatsoever this fiscal year. They're all budgeted for next year.
Any more questions? Let's take this to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on. Ah, we're done. We have no additions from citizen, ordinance and resolution, moving to, uh, new businesses.
Council Chair?
Team A, Councilman?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the business license for three-four-two Bar and Grill at three-nine-three-two Palmas, outlined in thirteen A.
Support. Motion by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Conson, any discussion?
No. No discussion, okay. Take, let's take it up, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to thirteen B, Council Chair, Councilman?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the business license renewal for Applebee's number eight-zero-eight-five at two-six-five-eight-two-four, as outlined in thirteen B.
Support. A motion by Councilman Saab, supported by Council, by Councilman Conson, any discussion?
Let's put the microphone on. Uh, this was one of the establishments that had a deficiency, so I don't know if Corporation Council has an update on, or that-
Roger, any update?
Any update on thirteen B?
Applebee's?
This was not a payment, this was one that was cited by the police department. Roger, this was not, this had nothing to do with a payment. This was cited by the police department. This was not a water bill.
Okay, Council Chair, for a minute, I see, but one second, one second, one second, I'm sorry.
Not our humanity.
Okay, that's, that's- Okay.
Roger, this was a liquor, this was on the liquor license rea- can I have a minute, please? This was on the liquor license review. They were cited by the police department, it had nothing to do with a fee. It was something to do with the, um, with the police department cited them.
Liquor ticket or something?
Yeah.
Them, going out to them personally, to follow up, and they're supposed to get back to you, they said by June sixth. They said, and when we went down to your office, it was just a fee, the citation for the liquor license- Okay, now we've come down to your office and asked you to give us documentation, other than a fee, what else is left left for the liquor license? I know the citation, and they were wrong in the citation about the Warren Golf Course, because they had the wrong address, I corrected that.
That's all right.
So now with the Applebee's and the other, other businesses as well, we went out to the location. Now, they were in a bankruptcy issue, okay? They're asking to table their liquor license, and we asked them to clarify when they come out of bankruptcy, please, you're gonna- If you're saying we're not doing our due diligence, we are, okay? We will follow up, Council Chair, and let you know, but we've gone out personally to the location, contacted the managers of the business, and alerted them.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrin, now let's just go ahead, are we okay?
Can we refer this?
Let's table this, you guys can take a look at it, I'll bring it back next time.
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Saab, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Conson, are you okay with second?
Yes.
All in favor?
The table, yes.
Aye.
They say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Moving to thirteen C, Business License Renewal, Connect Auto Sales LLC.
Councilman?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the business license renewal for auto, Connect Auto Sales LLC, four-four-one-three, South Beach Days, outlined in thirteen C.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Conson, any discussions? I see no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving to thirteen D, Business License Renewal, Red Lobster Hospitality LLC.
Council Chair? Councilman?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the business license renewal for Red Lobster Hospitality LLC, sixty-eight-fifty North Telegraph, as outlined in thirteen D.
Support. A motion by Councilman Saab, supported by Councilman Conson, any discussion? I see none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving to thirteen E, Temporary Food Truck, Ten Cart License Renewal Application, Burgerati. Council Chair? Councilman? Proton, I'm sorry. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the temporary food truck, cart license renewal application for Burgerati, as outlined in thirteen E. Support. Uh, motion by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Conson, any discussion?
Council Chair?
Councilwoman?
Okay, this is the business that I did the FOIA on, and yes, there was some, um, things they did wrong, but I'm gonna give them the benefit of the doubt and approve this, because I know people make mistakes and they learn by them. I do not have a fresh FOIA, so it's possible that they're doing the things right, so I'm gonna give them the benefit of the doubt. But they, in the past, were caught pouring grease, which I have that from the health department, and they had trouble with, um, handling of food, and there was something with a cutting board, too, that they, and they were not switching out their pencils as often as they should, but like I said, they were newer then, I'm gonna give them the benefit of the doubt, and I'm gonna go with it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, this is for a year, Madam Clerk, or a six month? For a year, right?
No.
Six months?
Six months.
Six months, six months, okay. I see no more discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to thirteen F, Permanent Traffic Control Device Handicap Sign on North Cali Road.
Council Chair? Council Proton, I'm sorry. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the placement of a handicap parking sign at sixty-sixty-four North Cali, as outlined in thirteen F.
Support. A motion by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Conson, any discussion? I see none, all of, whoever's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to comments from council members.
Council Chair? Council Proton, I'm sorry. Well, I become the council. Proton. Um, I would just like to thank everybody for supporting the new fire station, I think the city's long due. I think our firefighters deserve it, and the residents deserve it. And I believe that the response time at this new location are actually like ninety-nine point eight percent accurate to the fastest response on the north end. Um, so I hope we move the direction, the city in a new direction in the near future, in this direction, getting the city up to date on everything and facilities and everything. Also, I always talk about speeding, please, whether you're on Zoom, whether you're watching any of the groups that are streaming, or in the audience, please tell your kids to slow down in neighborhoods. They are so reckless. I swear, parents have no idea what their kids are doing in the streets. And kids. Kids.
Nothing for balance, please.
And I say kids, because if they were adults, they would not be doing this. Um, our police department is gonna, is gonna go hefty on people this, uh, in the coming weeks, so don't be calling complaining, police officers are, uh, harassing your kids, blowing over your kids, 'cause believe me, cars are gonna be impounded. We're gonna be taking pictures next to these cars. Um, also, I wanna wish everybody Happy Father's Day this weekend, and please cut your lawns.
Council.
Proton.
Councilwoman, please.
Yeah, and speaking of police, um, yeah, a couple of days ago, I was going through Westland on Ford Road, um, just east of Newburgh. And I was, I was stopped at a light, and I thought it was really odd, the police officers were walking between the cars. I got money out, I thought they were collecting money. And what they were doing, they were putting stickers on the cars of people who didn't have seatbelts on, and up ahead were police cars to pull over the cars with the, you know, stick it notes on their car.
Was that Dearborn Heights?
That was Westland.
Well, Dearborn does it too.
And I thought, wow, okay, save money.
Councilman?
Uh, thank you, Council Chair, actual Council Chair. Um, I had the honor and privilege last night of attending the L A H C dinner. The L A H C President, our own Councilman, uh, Hassan Ahmad, and, uh, forty-second year, is that correct?
Forty-second, yeah.
Yeah, very nice, and, uh, Councilman Ahmad has done a great job. Um, I wanna wish to, uh, all fathers, uh, Happy Father's Day coming up. Uh, I'm sure everybody's been watching the news, there was a, uh, announcement by the former, uh, Prime Minister of Israel that, uh, the current Prime Minister that over, uh, fifty thousand people in Gaza have been killed, half of them at least, women and children. And, uh, that the, the, uh, former Prime Minister says the, the current Prime Minister, Benjamin Netanyahu, has been committing war crimes. I know our new president promised us peace, and said when he gets elected, we'll see peace. Well, there's no peace in Ukraine, unfortunately, and no peace in the Middle East, so let's contact our elected officials and pray for peace.
Well, definitely do, thank you, Councilman, we always, uh, wish and pray for peace. Uh, I do wanna thank you for, and thank everybody who attended the gala yesterday. Uh, I'm grateful to lead an organization that's been in, um, in our community for forty second, for forty-two years, uh, with different programs that actually Dearborn Heights, uh, take advantage of. Uh, we have a couple in the police department, and a couple in the schools, and it's totally free, uh, free of charge. Um, secondly, I would like to thank our Parks Director for an amazing job, uh, with the festival, uh, and also the police department. I know we had some help from, uh, Wayne County Reserve and the state police, but everybody did an amazing job. Uh, everybody was happy, and, uh, they had a good time. Um, also, would like to wish everybody, um, a Happy Father's Day, all the amazing fathers out there, especially in our city, and, um, blessed weekend. Moving on now, any announcement for city officials? Director, please.
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor, just wanna talk about a couple of items. Uh, first off, Saturday from eleventh, um, eleven to three P M, uh, next Saturday, at Caroline Candy Library, will be our summer reading kickoff. This year's theme is Color Our World, and we'll be art-focused. And we'll be art focused. Uh so come on out and see ventriloquist Richard Paul at eleven A M. And the Reptarium Interactive Reptile Zoo at two P M. We'll be having other activities, prizes and games. All ages are welcome, so come on out and start the summer with us. I'll be passing on some flyers after this. Uh next, I wanted to share something that's finished after a surprising amount of work uh by staff. Um I wanted to uh. Thank A J, our outreach coordinator on this, um our new resident bags. So, hooray, in an effort to educate our public. Uh as to our city services, we have compiled a set of flyers and materials from a whole lot of departments. And I hand out to new residents as they apply for CFOs. Uh homestead exemptions are by request so they know who to contact for what and hopefully reduce some confusion. Uh we also included a small hygiene kit uh and a mini flashlight as well. Uh so let us know if anyone needs one. It's got um information on garbage routes and information on. Boating creek thing and something from the Chamber of Commerce, how to read your assessment notice, uh how to read your water bill, um. And it's um translated into English and Arabic. We have a flyer, services in a glance, so. Um we'll be handing this out uh hopefully to all the residents that want one. So uh they come in with a lot of information that sometimes they feel uh they don't always get, so. Anyway, that's all for now. Thanks for your time and see you at the library.
Thank you, director. And I'm clerk.
Lynn Senia, you're Dearborn Heights city clerk. Um we've been receiving a couple of phone calls and I think um. Councilman Sob had asked about this before too. And it's regarding street vendor licenses. I just wanna read you a little bit about the application and the process. So the undersigned hereby applies for a license under the provisions of the city code of the city of Dearborn Heights, regulating the licensing of street vendors. Represents that the statements herein contained are true and undertakes and promises. To comply with all the provisions of the city code of the city of Dearborn Heights in the conduct of the business to be carried on. It is understood that any license issued upon this application shall be revocable for cause in stipulated in said city code. On the back, what the applicant has to provide to us is a completed and notarized application for a street vendor license. Two passport sized photos of the applicant clearing showing head and shoulders, the driver's license or state I D. Insurance and registration for each vehicle being used, as well as a copy of the applicant's um iChat. Um in addition to, okay, they have to come to us and get thumb printed as well, okay, um. Just so residents know, we only have two vendors that have applied out uh in the city. So if um residents have any issues with that, please contact the ordinance department, get, I guess, the name of the vendor that is. Out there and doesn't have a license, or they can um. They can also report that online. Okay, and then I'm just, thank you, council chair, for the opportunity to attend yesterday. How 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 much money in scholarships?
Sixty thousand.
Yep, so that was all. It was a beautiful event.
Thank you, thank you.
And then happy Father's Day.
Oh, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, council chair.
Yeah.
Uh council chair proton, um when I put several ordinances together, I was in a request um. Uh with permission, maybe if we can have um we put a blight ordinance, a fog ordinance. Um a reimbursement for our firefighters and police officers. If we can, if I can have maybe, for instance, um councilman Winslow work with me if you designate such on our blight ordinance, he's reviewed it. Um and although our um uh councilman Maxwell is very somewhat attractive with the fog, uh the fog or um. Fat oils and grease ordinance, she can help it because that's that prevents the businesses from dumping the grease. And I followed Dearborn and Sterling Heights and some other cities that put one together. Um we have a reimbursement. I would ask if you can assign councilman Sob. Um as he brought up the Vista Maria issue, but our officers went out three hundred eighty four times last year. Just responding, um and our firefighters go out to a lot of nursing homes where they can handle stuff individually. Rather than having city resources used um and help us look at that ordinance. Um and then with the truancy, the vaping, the vaping with marijuana. If I I would ask councilman Big Dune and um um. Council councilman Constant to help work with me on that language, if if you should so designate.
Sure, if they would like to be on this committee, I mean, more power.
Sure.
Okay.
But let me let me ask, I know you mentioned police, but are we, the ordinance, is it just for commercial uh calls or is it uh? I don't wanna charge our residents if they call.
No, it's businesses, like Vista Maria, so they have internal.
For excessive uh calls?
Right, we we went out, one of our officers was injured, but they should have internal. I know there was an issue with the statute and and Lansing, but I think it's changed. So we're paying resources, they should be paying resources. Then the firefighters, they actually came from Chief Brogan, brought it up to me.
Roger, I'm sorry to.
Yes.
Councilman.
Monday.
Yeah, last resolution, same day.
Right.
Go with the, go to the chair first. Sound. Go ahead, councilman. No, that's it. So outside? Outside, Mr. Ferron.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, any more any more announcement from, no more? Okay, we're moving on to public comments. You have three minutes. Please state your name, the street you live on and your city.
Three minutes is a long time. Renee Myrna, Indianapolis, Dearborn Heights. Um thank you for voting for the fire station, all of you guys. Thank you for agreeing. And uh it's a way different spirit in here today. It just feels like there's been a release where you guys are free to do what you know is right to do. Um one of the things, um. I've only been coming to these meetings since probably November or something last year and uh. And it was eye opener just to to see how the city works, cuz you know, I've never been to any city council meetings. Um I have to tell you, I am so glad that nobody said. Where's the mayor? I am so glad. Thank God we got over that, you know, okay, if he comes, he comes. If he doesn't come, he doesn't come. But man, let's not beat a dead horse, you know, I mean. It's his choice and 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 let's get over it and work as a city. And that's what you guys did, and I'm proud of that. Uh the other thing, I wish we can get rid of this issue. Um. Councilwoman Maxwell, um I, you know, we've been kinda going around to getting this paperwork for Burgerati, round and round. Um I don't see anything out of the ordinary here. I worked in the restaurant business. It was like cutting boards were had scratches on it. The eggs were next to the lettuce, which got moved that day and um, you know, and and the utensils have to be washed more often. Those the only three things I saw in there. I saw nothing about the sewer. I saw that they did the inspection. Nothing to. It says that it was inspected, but it never connects it to Burgerati. And I've asked multiple times for the video, which you promised me, this nothing has it and and if anybody else wants this. If they can point it out to me, no place in here does it connect it to Burgerati. So here's the thing. I'm glad you guys passed it today, you know, and um unless we get the video that proves that Burgerati did it and if and okay, and if they did it one time, fine. You know, let's find him or whatever has to be done and let's keep moving past it, but. You know, this is the first issue when I first came into city conference that came up, so this happens to be my course I'm gonna die on or something, whatever you call it, you know? It's just the fact that I just wanna see what's done right for people. If you say you got proof, I'm a person that's gonna say, you better show me the proof. And I've asked multiple times for the video.
Well, you know what? Please let her finish. Please finish. No, no, please finish.
Multiple times for the video and I kept getting, oh, I'll get that to you. Oh, I didn't have your phone number. I didn't have your email. I didn't have it. She's got my email, you know, cuz we've gone back and forth. And you can't like give me a hand copy of the video. All I'm saying is, like, he's passed now. Let's get past this grease issue unless he's continuing to do it and you guys have actual proof. That you can bring the the video up, you know? So that's the only other thing and you know, you guys are like doing awesome job. I'm glad to see what's going on with the city. I see that the the people are engaged now. You know, and that was the whole point of getting the citizens engaged with what you guys are doing, you know, everybody's working together. We we may not all agree, but you know what? We're moving forward.
Thank you very much. And I think councilman already, she said when we had that there was nothing from Wayne County, so that's why she approved it.
I said in the past, they may have done something wrong, but I'm sure they learned from their.
Well, I just wanted on record that I didn't see anything in the report that's that they that tied them directly to it.
Give them to me. I'll show you. Give them to me.
There you go.
As it does, they were called out for evidence of grease and. This picture here, it's it took a, oops, shoot, they got the license plate in there too. Dorm drain interior showing dumping evidence.
Right, if it doesn't tie.
Yeah, that's part of the whole report for Burgerati. It's page number two out of.
If you read the whole report, nothing ties it to Burgerati, even.
Okay, okay, we're gonna move on. It's another debate. I can move on. Thank you very much. They're already passed. They're gonna be in business. Hopefully they stay clean. Any more comments from residents?
Margaret King, Mayfair Street, Dearborn Heights. I just wanna say thank you for approving the fire station. Public safety should be our number one priority. And we can always learn something new. When I walked in here, the conversation with Angela and I listened to what Hassan Sob said. And I learned something new. So just always keep an open mind and make that judgment, and I'm glad that it's done because our fire. Firesters deserve the number one. So thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Any more in person? Okay, moving on to Zoom, madam clerk. One on Zoom.
I don't see any hands up.
You don't see any hands? Good. Motion adjourned. Motion to adjourn by councilman Sob, seconded by councilman Constant. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. It's a pause? No, of course.